Wednesday, October 4th, 7:30 PM, 2023. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have the review of the minutes of the September 6th, 2023, and September 11th, 2023, regular minutes. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns, discussion-wise, from council on those minutes? Hearing none, I am looking for a motion to accept those minutes, or approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of, uh, from August.
For September?
September.
September, I'm sorry.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have, pardon me if I butcher any names here, Reception of Delegation, Delion, and Stang, Michelle Mills, and Addie Blickenstaff?
You got it.
Okay, nice. Presentation of fiscal year 2023 audit. Your discretion, y'all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle Mills. I'm an audit principal with Delion and Stang. With me this evening is Addie Blickenstaff. She is the audit manager. She led the audit engagement and was the point of contact and worked most closely with Barry during the audit. And tonight, just for clarification, we are presenting the draft audit report for your approval. Each of you in your packet received a very lengthy document. We're not here tonight to go over each and every page. We have prepared a PowerPoint of what we think is most important, information from the entire document, but certainly are here to answer any questions you may have as well. All right. Our first slide is going to give some general audit information, and it's at the government-wide level. Our responsibility as auditors is to plan and perform the audit to make sure that the financial statements are fairly stated and to issue an opinion on those financial statements. We're proposing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that they are fairly stated in all material respects. All the transactions were found to be properly supported. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit, and there were no disagreements with management. We would like to commend Barry and her team for an excellent job. This is probably the fastest turnaround we've had. The audit started shortly after Labor Day, and here we are this evening with a draft report. They do a really nice job, and I always say, in order to have an audit clean, it's what you do every day, not just the two or three weeks prior to the audit team arriving. So I just want to make sure Barry and her team get praised. We did have one material audit adjustment that we found during our audit procedures, and that was to record retainage payable on some construction projects, and we're going to talk about the details a little bit further in the presentation. There was one significant deficiency in internal control identified, and we have a separate slide on that as well to go over the details with you. And then, new for fiscal year 2023 because of your ARPA funding, the city elected to have an alternative compliance examination of its ARPA spending, and that was because you expended more than $750,000 during fiscal year 2023, and we're going to go over that a little later in another slide as well.
Okay. We're now going to switch to some very high-level financial highlights of the city on a government-wide basis. Just a reminder, when we use the words "government-wide," we mean general and utility funds combined. So these are totals for both of those funds. Government-wide total assets at year-end were about $54.1 million. Total liabilities were just under $15 million. And reminder, assets minus our liabilities give us our net position, which was $35.9 million as of June 30, 2023, of which $9.3 million is restricted for future capital infrastructure and a loan reserve. Overall, the city had a change in net position of an increase of $3.6 million. Some other noteworthy items: The city's cash deposits were fully collateralized as required by state law at June 30, 2023. During fiscal year 2023, the city contributed $305,000 to the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System for its employees. Total debt payments due within the coming year are just about $920,000. During fiscal, uh, total ARPA funds awarded through fiscal year 23, again, the city received its second and final payment from ARPA in August 2022, or $6.7 million. During fiscal year 2023, the city spent $2.3 million, and at June 30, 2023, $4.2 million remains deferred for future use and future projects. Here is a quick snapshot of the government-wide total assets, broken down into the relative categories. As you can see by the left-hand side, the green, the city's total assets, uh, the largest category of its total assets are its capital assets of just about $31.6 million, or 58% of its total. The next largest categories are its cash and cash equivalents in the medium blue color, medium blue, I'll call it that, at $11.7 million, or 22%. Restricted cash of $9.7 million, or 18%, and then receivables due from customers or other governments of just over $1 million. On the opposite ends of things, this is looking at the government-wide total liabilities of $14.6 million. $10 million of it is debt obligations, as you can see in the light blue color, which represents 69% of your total liabilities. The net pension liability, again, future pension contributions, is just under $3 million, or 20%. Accounts payable in accrues of $1.4 million, and then a small remaining other liability balance of $128,000.
Now, we're going to, um, this is our general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So now, we're going to switch to the general fund, and this is some financial highlights. The difference between your assets and your liabilities on a fund level is termed "fund balance," and we are required to break out your fund balance into four different categories. The very first column is the non-spendable, which equals your prepaid expenses, which is about $26,000. Committed, which represented park impact fees, was about $273,000. Assigned was a small balance of about $7,600 and represented the remaining payments on a non-cancible lease obligation and some lease asset forfeitures. And then the remainder is unassigned, and that's $4.7 million. The general fund total revenues were about $6.6 million, very comparable to the prior, I'm sorry, an increase of 1.2 over the prior year. Our general fund expenses were also $6.6, an increase of 1.3. So when you look at bullet point number six, you'll see overall, very comparable year-over-year. Our revenues were up, our expenses were up, but our net was relatively the same. For fiscal year 2023, it was an excess of $33,000 versus an excess of $42,000 in the prior year.
These next two slides are just some bar graphs that are going to highlight those changes in the revenue and expense categories of the general fund. So along the bottom, you can see the largest revenue accounts: Taxes, licenses, and permits, intergovernmental revenues, service charges, and other revenues. And as you can see, the largest swing in categories is in the intergovernmental revenues, going from about $1 million to $1.9 million, and that was due to our ARPA funding during fiscal year 2023. Again, we incurred a lot of ARPA expenses, and we have to match that relative revenue and recognize the grant income. The service charges in the fourth bar over were a bit down, and that was due to our impact fees, less development and collection of impact fees and benefit assessments in 2023 as compared to 2022. And then we did experience a little bit of growth in other revenue categories, which was due to some auction proceeds and insurance claims during the year. The tax, the taxes on the left-hand side is just a natural growth of the city, going from about $3.9 million to $4.3 million. Here's the snapshot, snapshot of the expenses. As you can see, the largest increase is in that middle category of public works, going from about $1.5 million to $2.4 million, and that was due to the various capital outlay projects that were funded by the ARPA, the biggest ones being the Roberts, uh, Roberts Mill, right, Barry, Roberts Mill project during fiscal year 2023. All the other categories were relatively comparable year-over-year.
This next slide is going to focus on the utility fund and give a few financial highlights. The total net position for the utility fund was $2.23.8 million, and that was broken down into four categories. Your net investment in capital assets was $11.9 million. Restricted for the wastewater treatment plant loan reserve was about $26,000. Restricted for future capital infrastructure, $9.3 million, and the remaining balance of $2.5 is unrestricted. The total operating revenues were $4.8 million, and that was a slight decrease from fiscal year 2022 of about $362,000. The total operating expenses were $3.2 million, and that was a slight decrease from fiscal year 2022 of about $55,000. There were net, um, there were non-operating revenues of about $546,000, and that included $368,000 of a capital contribution related to the acceptance of Meadow Brook, as well as interest income of about $178,000. Your investment income, investment income was up significantly due to rates. Your total non-operating expense, which comprised interest expense, was just over $331,000. Overall, there was net income of $1.8 million in the utility fund compared to $1.6 million in the prior year.
Here is the bar graph, again, looking at the utility fund's operating revenues year-over-year. Charges for services saw a big drop from about $4.9 million to $3.1 million. This was due to the benefit assessments being drastically down in fiscal year 23 compared to fiscal year 22. It was hot and heavy with development for, I don't know, several years, and then fiscal year 23, it really took, slowed down. All the other categories, rental income and miscellaneous, were comparable, and then similar to the general fund, a big uptick in our intergovernmental revenues due to the grant income of the ARPA funding. As Michelle mentioned on the financial highlight slide, the expenses only decreased $55,000 from fiscal year 22. So as you can see across the various categories, they're all comparable year-over-year.
Your audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, and as a result, we are required to look at your internal controls over financial reporting and communicate anything that is deemed to be either a significant deficiency or material weakness in your internal controls. So this next slide is going to highlight the one finding that we had during the fiscal year 2023 audit.
So our one finding, again, was a significant deficiency, which was less severe than a material weakness, and was related to contractor invoices. So we're going to move from the left-hand side to the right-hand side of the screen. Criteria: The city is responsible for having adequate internal controls over financial reporting and ensuring the city's books and records are complete and all costs are properly recorded. During our testing, we noted several contractor invoices for various capital projects where the corresponding retainage had not been recorded as of June 30. Additional capital outlay costs and corresponding retained payables were recorded as of year-end in both the general and the utility fund. In addition, the related grant income was recorded as most of the projects were grant-funded. Overall cause: Due to the ongoing nature of these projects, there was a misunderstanding as to when such costs should be recorded. The effect of the finding: Additional capital outlay costs were recorded for the following amounts, adjusting for the applicable retainage: General fund of $33,000, utility fund of $130,000 for additional retainage and capital outlay cost of $164,000. In addition, grant income was recorded of $103,000 amongst the two funds. There was one project that was not funded by ARPA or a grant, and so that's why those two figures are a bit different. So we recommend the city review its current internal control policies to ensure situations like the one described above are properly detected and corrected. I won't go over the whole response, but the response provided by management was that the city has updated their capital asset narrative to now include recognition of retainage at fiscal year end, as underlined in the below excerpt from the narrative. The construction and progress tracking spreadsheet has also been updated to include retainage amounts. Checking for retainage on projects and recording any applicable costs will be part of the year-end process moving forward. And there is just the excerpt from the new narrative regarding construction and progress cost. So I'm going to pause there if you have any questions, because I know that was a lot of information, before we move on to the last piece.
Any questions, council?
Is it just a matter that it was not recorded as an ongoing, the retainage was not recorded properly, ongoing was all recorded at the end of the year? Is that, I'm just, I'm kind of lost as to why that was, what that issue was and why it was an issue.
So with the large contractor, with the large contractor projects, they hold, some of them hold 5%, 10% retainage. Again, costs incurred, but the city isn't going to remit the cash until we're sure the project is complete. So those costs that were incurred weren't recorded when we did the audit in the correct fiscal year, and they were just kind of, again, I don't want to say nowhere, but they weren't in fiscal year 23, even though the costs had been incurred.
There was no account, there was no account set aside?
Correct.
For that?
Yes.
Even though that was an expenditure recorded, it was not?
Right. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Wasn't a cash outlay, but it was a expenditure incurred.
Right. We weren't showing it as a payable at year-end.
Right.
That was going to be due to the contractor. Yep.
So essentially, it was missed until the audit process, and then when we began the audit process, it came to our attention, and the entry was booked.
Yep. Anything else? Okay.
Earlier on, we mentioned that the city elected to undergo an alternative compliance examination, and again, I kind of laugh at "elected to." So what they did was they allowed municipalities that received ARPA money this examination choice, if this is where all of their federal money was coming from. If you received other federal money, and the ARPA would have kicked you over to have a single audit, then again, you'd have to have a single audit. You weren't eligible, I mean, you weren't required to have a single audit. The only federal dollars you had was the ARPA, so they allowed this lesser examination. I think early back several years ago, many years ago, probably, the city did undergo single audits because of federal monies that they had received for various projects. It's probably been a number of years since you had to undergo one. So this is an easier route for municipalities to meet their obligation to elect to have this examination. This, um, our compliance procedures were done concurrently with the financial statement audit. We have completed all of our work, and we will be issuing our compliance report here at the, later this week or early next week. We wanted to share the results with you. We did not identify any instances of non-compliance. Under the examination, we were required only to look at activities allowed or unallowed, and whether or not the city complied with the cost principles. In our opinion, the city did comply in all material respects with the specified requirements during fiscal year 2023. So we are planning to give a clean audit report on your compliance of your ARPA spending. Any questions?
I'm not hearing any questions here. So a little bit after, once we get to resolution ordinance and agreements, we'll be looking to do the approval for this. Again, is there any questions at the council level until then? Good. Sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for the presentation.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Next up, we have council member statements regarding conflicts of interest on the agenda items. Would any council members like to express those now? Hearing none, proceeding forward to public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. If you're in the audience and you have a public comment that you'd like to make now or pertaining to agenda or non-agenda items, this is the time. Hearing none, I'm going to proceed down to resolution ordinances and agreements. First up, we have the approval of the fiscal year 2023 audit. I'm looking for a motion on the approval of that draft audit.
Make that motion.
Looking for a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have the adoption of Resolution 2023-15 Water Allocation for September. I am looking for a motion on the acceptance of that.
Let me accept the water allocation.
Looking for a second?
I will, I will second.
For the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We are at the city manager report.
On, uh, capital equipment, I've been reporting on that every month. Our Public Works truck number eight is officially retired. That was the F-350 that, uh, the Public Works director uses to run around Talon and for him being on-call. So it's replacement vehicles in service. The small dump truck is still at the upfitter. On the police vehicles, Acting Chief Mitchell has been keeping in touch with the dealer for state bid. They've advised that they have two vehicles. Acting Chief Mitchell is in contact with the salesperson at the dealership, trying to make sure we lock those two vehicles in, since these were actually vehicles that were supposed to be delivered in fiscal year 23, and we had to roll that acquisition into the current year. So police vehicles have just been very, very problematic this year. So we're still waiting to hear back from the dealer, but, you know, we've decided, even though one's not the right color, we can use it as an unmarked vehicle and not have to have vehicles sort of keep stacking up as far as, you know, our regular replacement program. So that's still in the works. I was hoping I'd be able to report by tonight that we'd signed everything and the vehicles were on the way, but that has not happened yet. As far as, uh, changes to charter and code, our second item, there's a draft backyard chicken ordinance in this month's packet. Director Hale and I have reviewed a number of ordinances, some of which Councilwoman Fuller provided, kind of picked and chose from those, what we liked and thought were, you know, things that would work best if we did move forward with something like this for the city. We also had a call with Dawn Kenna, the Carroll County Animal Control Supervisor, and she offered some good, I guess, uh, knowledge, being someone who keeps chickens herself, as to things to watch out for and if we do move forward with allowing them in the city. So, you know, she gave us some good pointers on enforcement aspects, and so, again, that ordinance is in the packet. We'll talk about it a little bit later, under, under Old Business. So, and let's see, moving on, the Roberts Mill Road Broad Street project, front yards were restored this past week. Obviously, you know, it's going to take some time for the grass seed to take hold and everything, but the yards were dressed with topsoil, and there's still some more blacktop work to be done on a couple driveways and parking lots over there. Work really has shifted over to Roberts Mill Road at this point, and there's more in the public works report for that, but we are still on target to meet the 300-day construction window that was in the contract, and, um, things are really moving quickly on Roberts Mill Road. They have multiple crews out there. They have storm drain going in from both ends to kind of meet in the middle, which is a little unusual, but they've got the manpower to be putting additional crews on the job, and the pace has really picked up. The area between Franklin and Antrim has been milled now, so work on the water line there is ongoing, and, again, weather permitting, we're on target to finish this fall. So things are, the pace has really picked up once they got past the, all the rock issues with, with Broad Street. The storm drain project at Riffles Lane, not a lot of new information. I did hear back from the engineer today. He assures me that he will have the design finalized by early next week at the latest, and they are also working on the deeds of easement, or the easement plats, because this is an area where we did not have this drain mapped, and we didn't have a utility easement across the properties, and that's kind of accounted for some of the slow pace of things with trying to get permission from all the property owners, and this goes back, you know, quite a ways at this point. So it's still in the engineer's hands. The project is going to require more paving on Riffles Lane than we originally anticipated, just because the area is so flat between the inlet on Riffles Lane and where it goes into the state highway system on York Street, that we are going to need to recontour part of, part of Riffles Lane to make sure the water gets to the drain and that it functions properly. So basically, we don't want to repeat whatever was done when that drain was installed, and it probably never really functioned well. But we're, we're hearing some concerns from property owners along there, because some of them have dug up the pipe in their backyard themselves to try to figure out what was going on with it, and if we can get those easements recorded, we'll be a lot more comfortable going in there and making temporary repairs to the yards, but until we have those utility easements, all we have is, we have a right-of-entry that the homeowner signed. So we'd really like to get the easements signed before we go in there and actually do any work. Let's see, the fiscal year '24 sewer rehabilitation, we're waiting for two more proposals for this year's projects. CDM Smith, our usual engineer, is going to prepare a proposal for us, and we've asked two other engineering firms for proposals as well. So hopefully, those will be back and before you next month, so we can make a choice on, on who we're going to award the design of those projects to. And this is, um, these will be for the sewer lines behind West Baltimore Street and terracotta lines that run through Memorial Park. And when I say West Baltimore Street, this is not actually in the street. This particular line runs in people's backyards for homes that front West Baltimore Street on the south side of the street. So it's going to be, it's not going to tear up the street, but it is going to disturb people's backyards. So in addition to those project sort of things, just wanted to give a little bit of an update on the Toynbee Town Police Department. Major Stem of the sheriff's office has continued his efforts to review and update our policies and procedures. He's nearly wrapped up there. We've, we've thrown a couple other tasks his way that weren't in his original list of to-dos, but he's, um, got, provided everything to the acting chief and the lieutenant down there for their review. The critical policies that we talked about last month have all been, have all been implemented through general orders and are all in empowered DMS for the officers to review, sign for, and, and implement. Also, on the police front, we've had some conversation about the portable radios the police are using. They're, they're very old, some are not functioning reliably, and we really need to implement a replacement program. So these radios are not inexpensive, so we're thinking about maybe purchasing five a year, something like that, until we can get all of them replaced. More to come on that, but that's going to be an expense probably in the coming year's budget. You know, we'll, we'll try to budget to acquire maybe five radios each year for the next three years.
Do you have to order them independently? You don't have a, a state order that you can?
So we can, we can piggyback on the sheriff's, sheriff's department's bid to try to save some money there, so we definitely are looking into that. Let's see. And as far as sheriff's office involvement with the police department, the forensic team from the sheriff's office has been in touch with the acting chief, and they've started inventorying the evidence room and also evaluating different and also evaluating different systems for the city that will give us a better, more efficient way to track the evidence. We still have a lot of, the systems that have been used over the years have changed, and we still have evidence down there that goes back to paper-only systems. So we're looking to update everything and combine all of the, there are four different systems that have been in use down there. So we want to try to consolidate that into one modern system that when we have a, designate a new evidence custodian, that individual will have one system to keep track of everything rather than, oh, this piece of evidence goes back to this system, and, you know, this piece of evidence goes to this big book over here. So we are looking to basically modernize that.
Are there prepackaged software systems available for that?
Yes, right. So it'll be, you know, certainly, we can look at what the Sheriff's Department uses, but there are other packages available as well. So we'll be exploring that in the coming month or so. Let's see, some other stuff that's going on. The Maryland Department of Transportation Pretor is tomorrow. This is the annual event where staff goes and shares with Department of Transportation staff at the state level various needs and desires of the municipalities and the county. The Department of Transportation folks go around the state every year, county by county, and do this. So the Pretor is when the staff gets to kind of talk about the nuts and bolts stuff and also give the secretary's staff a heads-up on what's likely to come up during the actual tour, which is when the Secretary of Transportation comes out, and then usually the elected officials go to the tour. So that's coming up tomorrow. It's going to be a virtual meeting, which we haven't, it was virtual during COVID, but then it was back to in-person. Now it's back to virtual. So this is our, you know, our opportunity to put the bypass on everybody's radar screen at the state level, not that they haven't heard from us a lot recently anyhow. But that's coming up tomorrow, so we'll keep it on their, keep it on the forefront for them. Let's see. Economic Development Director Mish and I are, have just started working on our Sustainable Communities Renewal. That is due later this month, so we're a little bit of a crunch on it. We don't need a resolution this year, as we have had to do originally, so it doesn't have to come back before you. But we do need to sort of reassemble a work group for the renewal, and we'll be reaching out probably to some folks that were involved in it in the past. And let's see, last thing, just wanted to point out, October is National Pedestrian Safety Month. So we've talked a lot about pedestrian safety in recent months, and State Highway has helped us out with implementing some upgrades, like the lead pedestrian interval at our signalized intersections and the upgraded crosswalks. So just, you know, keep your eyes open for pedestrians, and, you know, this month is about raising awareness and, you know, maybe some additional enforcement efforts. So just, again, keep your eyes open, watch out for pedestrians.
I was told a little while ago that the sign is now missing from the middle of the street.
Yeah, it went out today.
I saw it earlier today when I came through, but my wife informed me that it's now gone.
Okay, I'll reach out to the maintenance shop tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. A couple of questions. One of the things that you brought up in your report about things that are going on with the police department, the rules of conduct have been reviewed and recommendations to make them more specific. Are these changes to the employee manual, or is?
No, these will be specific to the, to the police department. I don't think these are things that would carry over to non-police staff. So it will probably be referred to in a police addendum when we're able to update the employee handbook, which we'd like to do once a new police chief is onboard. We'd like, you know, that individual's input into creating a police addendum for the employee handbook. And Clara has been compiling changes to the handbook for quite some time, but we've been holding off on it to be able to do this police addendum at the same time.
What's the acoustics issue in the interview room?
The interview room.
They can't record, is that the?
It is, yes. The acoustics are so bad that recording interviews is going to be problematic. It's very echoey, it's cinder block walls, tile floor, and doesn't even have ceiling tiles at this point. So it's very echoey in there, and that's going to mess with the recording.
Yeah, and I mean, in the meantime, can we just hang some fabric?
We have, we've reached out to a couple different firms, and we've only gotten response from one, and it's not a, it's not a large dollar amount, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with it so that we can get that. We have the other, we have the other equipment, and we've been waiting. So we had the equipment, then we were waiting to make sure we had the right policy in place before we use the interview room. And then we realized that the interview room itself is not ready. So, and we also want to put a coat of paint on it before the soundproofing or the acoustic people come in and, you know, put some sound deadening material up in there. But the room's been sitting there for quite some time, unused, so we're getting, we're getting close now.
One thing on, I like the look of the new Main Street Toontown website, and I just have a little comment, you know, on the, our, explore our Main Street Businesses page for baller gunsmithing, there's a very nice photo of a gold-toned automatic pistol, which I don't know if that's quite the image we want to put out there. Maybe we could exchange that for something of some nice hunting rifles or something a little different. It's not the most friendly photo in the world.
Noted, that's always a bit of a question mark when we are, when guns are involved in something. You know, we try to be supportive of some of the local athletic associations and other not-for-profit groups. And, you know, there are times that their fundraiser is a gun raffle or something like that. And, you know, those, right, can be polarizing.
I get it, I just would like a little, something a little less of a Baltimore image on that photo.
Sure, noted, we'll, we'll address that. That's it for me, unless folks have any questions.
Jim, are we any further along with the DPW meeting with the Senator and Alstef? Have we heard anything?
We have, I did speak, actually, I had a good call with Senator Reed yesterday. We touched on that a little bit. And as, some of this we probably should talk about in, not in a public session as far as the site for the facility that is moving forward. And I think that's going to be sort of our key in anything else moving forward is, you know, ensuring that we do have that site in hand.
Okay.
So, in conversation with the Senator yesterday, however, he did encourage that we focus on something that, beyond, beyond just it being a, an ordinary Public Works-type facility, that there would need to be something, you know, to, to make it more appealing to the state for any kind of special funding, that there needs to be some kind of environmental benefit, public safety benefits, you know, and maybe, you know, things that the current administration is focused on.
Okay, you're, you're answering something I didn't ask, but that is nice to know. No, I'm asking about the meeting that we're having concerning the fines.
I'm sorry, I, okay.
Yes.
Wrong, wrong topic, I apologize. Okay, okay. Yes, so we are, we are scheduled to meet with MDE in November. We have some work to do on the city team side of things between now and then. Did discuss that with Senator as well, and kind of came up with our game plan on that, which I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail here with. But we are moving forward. The Senator, you know, is maintaining his support for us and basically is going to be on standby for whatever we need as we have this meeting with MDE in November.
It's my fault, I shouldn't have said DPW, I should have said MDE.
So, okay, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Okay, is that all for City Manager Report? Talked enough?
Sounds good. Next up, we've got the departmental reports. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns with that?
I had one question. And this may have occurred before the new council was seated, but I noticed we lost Grandma's gems and Buddy Bear's and torn down. And I wasn't aware of this, that this was going to happen. Was this something that was in plans? I don't see where we issued a demolition permit or anything like that. And I was just wondering if there, if we knew what the intentions for that property might be.
Let me scroll back. I did not look at the zoning administrator's list here.
Administrator Hale's, Administrator Hale about it the other day, and he did issue a demolition permit. There was no plan for anything else to go in there at this time. I think the recognition by the property owner is that the property was more valuable without the building on it than it is with the building. And, you know, that building had fallen into tremendous disrepair.
I guess the property owner can do what he wants to with his property. I just wonder if you knew of any, is there any?
Nothing, there's nothing.
Reason that it was taken down other than the fact that he wants to market the lot?
That's it.
Reportedly, the building was in very poor condition interior-wise, and the new owner, the property did sell. The new owner, you know, determined that it was going to be easier to market as a clear site than with the derelict building on it.
Was there a demolitions?
I understand that zoning administrator Hale did issue a zoning certificate for the building's demolition. There's no, there's no particular process for that. You know, our, this property.
We don't have anything that requires somebody to get a permit to destroy a building?
No, it's a property owner decision. And while this is outside of the Old Town District, even within the Old Town District, you know, the design standards control new construction, but they don't stop demolition. So we really don't have any mechanism in place. If a property owner wants to take down a house, they can do that.
Consider, buzzy bears is one thing, but, you know, one of our historic downtown buildings could be next, and that, that may be tragic, so.
Is there any other questions for the departmental reports?
Are we going to offer comments on the departments other than the reports? In other words, is this the time?
At the end, going over our specific departments?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we'll do that towards the end before, we'll do it before public comment pertaining to agenda hours. So any additional comments regarding the departmental reports? Hearing none, proceeding forward to old business backyard chickens. You want to lead us off, Jim, on that?
Well, again, this is in response to the council's direction to explore the idea of backyard chickens. You know, this is a draft for your discussion. It's not being introduced tonight or anything like that. Basically, the, this would be in the zoning chapter, so it would be treating it as a zoning. People would get a certificate before getting the chickens and having a coop. So kind of the highlights of it, we are talking about a maximum of three chickens to be kept. In talking with the, with Animal Control, they actually recommended that an acre be the minimum-sized lot. But here in the city, we don't have many acre lots. So, you know, again, this is a more urban environment than, than is often the case where chickens are kept. But three seem to be a manageable number, and that was, you know, a number that some other municipalities used with similar-sized lots that we have. But we would require a chicken coop and a run for the chickens as well, with at least four square feet per chicken for the coop and 10 square feet per chicken for the run. We like the setbacks to be 20 feet from any property line. You know, again, the county ordinance, for example, is 75 feet from a property line, but that's, that kind of a setback would eliminate the possibility for even a lot of our larger lots in the city. Most of our lots are, you know, most of what's been built in the city over the last 20 years is in the R-10,000 district. So that's a 10,000-square-foot lot, you know, just about a quarter of an acre. And, you know, they typically are not 150 feet wide. They're typically more like, you know, 60 to 80 feet wide, 130 feet, 150 feet deep. So 20 feet seem like a reasonable number to keep the coops away from property lines, far enough that hopefully there won't be any smell issues for the neighbors, and still allowing it on, you know, your typical single-family lot. It wouldn't allow it on, you know, I believe, any of the existing townhome lots in the city, but, you know, perhaps townhome may not be the best place to have a backyard flock. So, you know, it's not, it doesn't let everybody in the city have chickens. You need to have a certain amount of space to do it, the way this is drafted. So, again, 20-foot setbacks, they have to be in the rear yard, and we would like people to take some sort of an online educational course. There are a number of, you know, chicken keeper certifications that you can get online. You basically go through a presentation and, you know, print out a certificate at the end. So we'd like to make sure that folks kind of take that step so hopefully they will have an idea of what they're getting into rather than just the cute little chicks that they see at TSC or the hardware store every spring. So we would, we would like that, you know, educational component to be in there that somebody needs to show they've, you know, they've taken the time to go through that course before they apply. And, you know, we don't want to have any commercial activities like selling eggs, and you'll need to get a zoning certificate for it before you can establish your flock. And then you need to register the flock with the Maryland Department of Agriculture. That's state requirement, and we want to make sure that happens, so we want to have proof of that within 90 days. And the 90 days is probably a little long, but that's consistent with the window that we allow people to pull a building permit. So if I do a project where, you know, if I'm building a deck, I need to get a county building permit as well as a city zoning certificate, and my zoning certificate gives me 90 days to pull that county permit. So we thought we'd be consistent with what we do for other zoning certificates. The Department of Agriculture advises that, that they typically turn the registration around within 15 to 30 days. So 90 days might be a little long, but again, it's kind of being consistent with what we do for other certificates. So that's, that's kind of the highlights of it, and really, this is just to kind of get the discussion started. If, I mean, if you like what you see here, you know, we can move forward with it and ask the city attorney to review it and, you know, put his two cents in as well. But, you know, this is kind of the framework that the zoning administrator and I came up with.
I like it, I think it's simple, simple enough, but still, you know, certainly gets enough information out there in terms of lot line offsets and stuff. out there in terms of, of lot line offsets and stuff. The only thing I'd say is you may want to include where they would get their certificate as, in, in the verbiage, certificate from X.
Yes. And, and much like we do with, with fence permits, we would have a, a second page with the zoning application that would have some backyard chicken-specific information, such as a couple different sites where you could get that chicken keeper certification or something similar. And also some, some guidelines that animal control has, has kind of assembled for us as well, so that, you know, we have a little bit more of an information sheet to go along with it that, that tells them, you know, where they can go find, you know, get their certificate and so on.
Yeah, I don't think you'd include in the ordinance just in case the links or anything like that change in the future.
And we, there were-
I don't know whether it would have to come from the Department of Agriculture or whatever, whether that would, if that's a specific requirement. So that's, that's what I was driving, not necessarily a specific website link, but that it would have to come from this organization.
Yes, and, right, and we would certainly still need to, you know, to come up with that information sheet to go along with the application, but, but that doesn't need to be in the actual ordinance. So, and there were some ordinance that were, that were much more complicated than this. And, and while we liked some of that detail, we talked about trying to enforce that level of detail, and, and that would just be problematic for us. So we, we decided that we really wanted to keep it simple and make it, you know, relatively easy for the zoning administrator and code enforcement officer to keep track of.
I have a couple of little comments. I know typically, when it comes to chickens, three is, is normally your minimum because they are flock animals or birds, poultry, whatever. And the people that already currently have chickens, six being that magic number that a lot of them have. If you keep that maximum at three and they lose one or two, then as far as the health of the chicken goes, I think you're talking about screwing that up. It's hard to introduce new chickens in the middle of whatever season, just for planning ahead for everybody that already has chickens and is going to come up and say, well, I've got five, now you're telling me I have to dump two of them. They've already had in their mind that six was that magic number. And also, knowing that roosters are prohibited, if there's some way to put something in there, because I know when people get the little ones, you don't know necessarily that they are chicks or roosters. So they should have some kind of timetable to find out and then figure out. I know that they do have organizations that help rehome roosters. I don't know how many there are.
Okay, and we can, we can certainly look into that and include something in, in that information sheet.
Right. And then the last thing was the setback for, was it C, from the lot line? For sheds and stuff, is, is our setback right now 10 feet?
Uh, accessory buildings is actually five feet, but typically, there, there are a lot of properties around town that have a 10-foot drainage and utility easement that we try to keep the sheds out of as well.
Right.
So a lot are 10 feet from the property line.
And the only thing I'm going to worry about there is if they try to incorporate any of those sheds into their coop area or their runs, then they're going to have a problem with that space. So if we keep just that setback with the sheds comprehensive with the, I mean, because I know people who have small barns already on their property that are like 10 feet from the line, and they may decide to use part of that, you know, for their chickens. But just something else to think about.
Right, and, and certainly that's why we're having the conversation. So, you know, part of the setback issue was, you know, there, there are some concerns that, you know, the potential for smell and things like that.
Well, and I don't have a problem with 20 feet from any dwelling. So if we keep that, I mean, we could even go and extend that part, so that if the dwelling is right on the other side, then they've got to think that-
Go back to maybe the 10-foot from, from the line.
Poppy line, but-
But 10-foot from the line and a minimum distance from the nearest dwelling or building, occupied building. You know what I mean? That way-
Yeah, the dwellings are still protected, but-
Yeah, that, right, that, that protects the occupied buildings from getting, from being any closer to the occupied buildings than we want it to be, but it allows them to use a little bit more of their lot. Because if you have a, like you say, if you have a lot that's 60 by 130 and you're in 20 feet from all of your lot lines, it kind of puts the chicken coop in the middle of the backyard. So, so I, I get that point completely.
Any further comments, questions, or concerns? And I know, Jim, you guys will go back and look at all this and bring us something back to the table.
I mean, if you, if, if consensus of the council is that you want to move forward and adopting something, you know, we can certainly make, if, if everybody's in agreement, we can make, you know, make those changes. You know, we can, if, if everybody agrees, we can keep it, bump it from three up to six and reduce the, the setbacks to 10 feet and then keep it still with the 20 feet from any dwelling.
Yeah, I might even, might even increase that.
Right. And again, it's, you know, it's all about, you know, how permissive do you want to be with it? And, you know, it sounds like the opinion is to be more permissive than, than the zoning administrator and I were initially thinking, so. But ultimately, it's, it's, you know-
Well, and I think the additional education and permits and stuff will, will help to do that, too.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion from council on one way or the other. They want to go with the changes of six and then 10 feet with 20 from dwelling, whoever wants, however you want to present the motion, if someone wants to present a motion on it, to proceed forward so that they can present it-
Do we need a motion or consensus?
Or a consensus.
Yeah.
I think we have, I think we have a consensus on the, everybody with the, the 10-foot setback and maybe, maybe even go to 30 feet from an occupied building. What do you, you know, if the, if the, the setback distance is to protect the nearest occupied building from having to smell the chickens, then you-
Right. I would, I think 20 feet is probably still, still appropriate.
All right, well, if, um-
I know nothing about chickens.
Just, just to check, consensus that we are doing, that you guys are looking for, 20 feet from dwelling, 10 feet from property line, let's start with that consensus first.
I'm good.
Looking for consensus down the board.
Yeah, if we're going in the right direction.
10, 10 feet from the lot line, 20 feet from the dwelling.
Yep.
Right?
All right.
We got consensus on that. Let's move to the actual number of chickens then, I know. I'll let you guys discuss actual number of chickens. I know we have six down here. Is there any?
Six chickens is a lot of chickens.
Well, they have to have allotted space, too, though. Like, they can't just shove them on a little space.
Right. If you have six chickens, you've got to have 60 square feet of room space and-
Right. Four square feet per chicken.
So, yeah, 20, yeah. So number of chickens increases size of, I don't know that six chickens is a whole lot. I mean, you know, how many eggs is that? If, if the purpose is to have eggs that you can have, they can-
I mean, typically, it's about one a day from each chicken.
Scrambled eggs, yeah. So maybe is four the right number or six? I, you know, I don't know. I mean, again, I don't know anything about chickens.
Right, right. Well, and again, if we can figure out a way to grandfather the people in that already have their chickens for that, rest of that, you know, so that they don't-
Right, I mean, right, because we kind of have used six as a number.
Yeah.
So just to go down like consensus six, any argument against it?
Comments?
No. That's not the consent.
Oh.
Yeah, they're still thinking.
Okay, so hold on. So you're saying grandfather them in, but would they still have to have these requirements?
Yes. But, and that's what I'm saying. Typically, the people who have chickens are serious about having chickens. Like, they're not just like hanging out.
The people that we grandfather, will they be subject to these rules?
Yes. It would just be those six until they lose those, and then they, it kind of goes down.
I guess, I guess the only question I have after I read this thing is, it's been designed so it's pretty difficult to have chickens bottom lot. Number two is, I'm still not clear who will enforce this ordinance. Fall with the zoning administrator or the police or?
This, this will be a zoning ordinance, so it'll fall under-
So that'll be up to Daryl to measure the spaces and make sure we have so many square feet per chicken and stuff like that.
Right, right. So essentially, you know, the, the coop and the run will be much like inspecting a shed that's under 150 square feet. So those, the zoning administrator goes out and inspects, makes sure that it's, you know, where, where they said it was going to be in the backyard and that it's not, you know, twice as big as they said on the application. Beyond that, it really becomes as much of an animal control issue as a zoning issue. Now, if we get reports that somebody has 20 chickens, Daryl will send a letter to them. You know, as it, it would still be a municipal infraction like any other zoning violation, you know, but putting this in our code makes it-
How long will they have to correct their problem? What, what's, what's the timetable there?
So, so we need to notify, I want to say that for a zoning violation, we give them notification and then they have two weeks to correct it before we issue fines. Health and sanitation is a little shorter time period, so, but again, depending upon what the violation would be, you know, if somebody is not cleaning their coop or run and allowing chicken manure to pile up and it's creating a, a health concern, that could be more a health and sanitation violation, which again, falls to the code enforcement officer. You know, the, the window to correct that is a little bit shorter than a zoning violation. You know, a little different process there, but it still falls under code enforcement.
Well, it, it is a health concern, but-
Right. But so are, you know, for that matter, so are dogs and cats. You know, we, we struggle to get people to pick up after their pets, and, you know, there are going to be people that are very responsible and people that aren't.
It looks like we're trying to design a ordinance so the people who have illegal chickens right now can continue to have chickens. That seems like the primary reason for this. There's not really an overwhelming demand for more chicken houses in town, I don't think.
Well, there are some people that were calling and asking and being told no. So we may see some people, but I don't think it'll be like an overwhelming amount of people. I think it's just going to be more people who want to be self-reliant or, you know, have their own eggs, not spend that extra money at the supermarket or, you know, I, I don't think we're going to see a huge amount of people that pet chickens.
With three chickens, you're not going to get many eggs.
So you say you get one egg a day from each chicken, typically?
But if we raise them to six, then you'll get twice as money.
And if you're lucky, maybe your neighbors will give you some of it.
But you don't have a rooster.
Right, so no babies.
So whether they lay or not is another question.
Oh, yeah, they'll still lay, but you'll be able to eat them.
This is really kind of silly to me, but that, that's just my opinion.
So you okay with him keep going with the, with where he's going? Like, would that work, just to continue on, just to come up with something, come up with-
Well, I, I don't see how this could, this is enforceable. I, I don't, I can't, it seems like we could use Daryl's time better than going out and measuring to see if we got X numbers square feet per chicken.
Well, probably, but I don't know that it would be that often.
And if, if that will ever happen, which I doubt that it ever will, why do we have it in the ordinance?
Well, the, the alternative to this is that whenever someone, some, if, if someone complains about somebody's chickens, they have to be told to get rid of them. And when people call in, we tell them, no, you can't have chickens. And that becomes the final answer. Either you're going to say yes or you're going to say no. If you're going to say yes, then you need to have an ordinance. If you're going to say no, that's what our ordinance currently states, then you stick by that and do what the ordinance says.
We have to enforce the ordinances that we have there.
If we do end up saying no-
I guess the point I'm trying to make is we don't allow chickens now, but people have chickens, and we're not doing anything about it. So if we pass an ordinance allowing people to have chickens, and we have all these guidelines about how their coops should be and how far the setbacks they are and how many square feet per chicken and all this kind of stuff, chances are we're not going to enforce that either.
Well, believe it or not, most-
So why don't we just leave it like it is and let people have chickens if they want to and just look the other way?
Because then we're purposely, we're purposely admitting we're looking the other way on our ordinance.
Why would we have to address it? We don't address it if somebody's got 12 cats.
Well, I think we did that.
We just, we just did that.
We did that.
I think most of the, the requirements are like kind of a common sense requirement that most chicken owners already have. So it won't take Daryl long to check them, just to make sure and make some suggestions, just like if he was checking somebody's shed.
Well, I'm sure most chicken owners, most chicken owners are responsible people.
Right, right. And most, like, you know, we had people that throw sheds up that are monstrosities and aren't where they're supposed to be because they don't bother telling anybody. And, you know, he has to go out and deal with those, too. So it, it's kind of a give and take on, on all, all fronts.
And, and like any other zoning ordinance, it is complaint, enforcement is complaint-driven. If no one's, if no one complains about it, there's no reason for Daryl to go out and look at it.
Right.
And the only time that they would be-
So their neighbors are in charge. If there's a problem, the neighbors will tell you.
Yes.
We're, we're just restructuring, in my opinion, the ordinance to actually work out.
So we're allowing, so that's where the enforcement's going to come from, is the neighbors. Oh, now I understand.
Yes, yes.
I get it.
Yes.
It's self-reducing. Man.
Exactly.
That's cool.
It, it's that way now, you know, if, if, if people have chickens, it's only because their neighbors have not complained about it. Because if the neighbors complained about it, under the current ordinance, we'd have to tell them to get rid of it. So that's where we are today.
Well, I'm obviously in the minority.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, Jim.
We, we will move forward in whatever direction you guys, you guys tell us. So, you know, I've, you know, I, I don't like to really sit here and say that we don't enforce, you know, our ordinances. We, you know, we do make, we do make the effort. Now, there are times where we have a property owner who is not cooperative when we send letters out, and those cases tend to drag on for a very long time. On occasion, we do bring that before mayor and council when we have one that is generating complaints and, you know, we've sent letter after letter after letter, and we want to move forward with, with, you know, beyond fines, so with, with actually taking something to court and we get the city attorney involved. That's not cheap, so we tend to only do that where there's, you know, something of a, a health concern or we are just getting, you know, complaint after complaint and we're making no headway with the property owner. But we always make, you know, when, when somebody calls in a complaint, you know, just, just as I used to do, Daryl goes out and checks on it. You know, if he can verify it, he will, you know, leave a, a notice in the door, leave his card in the door, send a letter if they don't call him back, you know, so we do make the attempt. We do, we do attempt to enforce things. And most of the time, folks comply. More often than not, there might be some grumbling or oftentimes it's just, oh, I didn't realize that I needed to get a permit or that, you know, I couldn't do whatever. And people are, you know, many folks are, I think, the way, the way I would be, that if I got a letter from the city saying I did something wrong, I'd be like in a, in a tizzy, you know, thinking, oh, jeez, I got to take care of this, you know, because I don't want to be, you know, not conforming with the requirements. But there are a lot of folks that, you know, you know, it's the 80/20 rule, you know, you spend most of your time, you know, 80% of your time on the 20% of people that don't, you know, operate. And I'm sure this will be no different.
Speaking to some of those municipalities that ended up doing the ordinance, it wasn't as much of a headache as they thought it would be.
Yeah.
And it did take care of some of the problems with people having, you know, chickens in their backyard that were unsupervised or, you know, un- in their backyard that were unsupervised or, you know, un-
So, do we have a number, we're thinking? I know, I think, do we have three people that want six? Is there a consensus on six?
And six is just the maximum.
Yeah, maximum.
They still have to meet the requirements for the space. And like I said, typically, three is considered the minimum because they do have to have a flock.
Yeah. But I'm, you know, I'm just thinking that if, and I kind of, if you're going to have chickens to have eggs for breakfast and mom and dad and a couple of kids, you can want six or eight eggs. So, six, I think is a number, is a good number. You're talking even then at 10 square feet per chicken and four square feet inside a coop, you're still looking at a building that's less than, less than 100 square feet, you know, or a, you know, a structure in a pen that's less than 100 square feet. So it's not like we're talking about anything big here. So that, that's where, that's, that's where I am.
So six?
I'm good at six.
Get with the max of six, get with the max of six. Get with the max of six.
I can live with it. I'll get you some eggs.
We'll make those changes, send it over to the city attorney for his review and get an ordinance number put on it and have it back for you guys for introduction next month. Then it will go to the, because it is a zoning ordinance, then it will go to the planning commission for their review, public hearing at the next workshop and so on. So it'll be back before you at least two more times.
Of course.
Sounds good. Okay. Moving on. Chickens, we are at the 20-town police department holiday leave policy. So we originally talked about this back in September in your packets. You guys will have been provided the policy that we are looking to implement here. And I know we're, are we looking to get consensus for acting chief Mitchell to implement or for council to implement?
I'm going to let you drive this one. So it's, um-
So, it can go one of two ways. It can be like how we did it last time where acting chief Mitchell has implemented and then we'll see it again later down the road as a number.
Right. I mean, that certainly works. You know, functionally, that's right, you know, but again, it all depends upon what council thinks about, about moving forward with it.
And that would be, comments, questions, concerns on what has been proposed here? I know last time we didn't have the police liaison here, so I wanted to see this presented one more time to see-
Well, I mean, first, I just have to say I'm glad that we actually got something in writing that actually says what was wanted, I guess. We never had that, I think, since September. That was every time it came to us, we said, just give it to us in writing. I think the only thing that we're missing is any kind of comparison between the two.
I did email that out, I thought to-
Well, I was going to ask the question, does, does Sykesville have an ordinance like this?
So of, of all the municipalities in Carroll County, we're the only one that does not have some sort of holiday time off.
And honestly, I think that's absurd. Because these are our public safety days.
No, Mount Airy didn't respond to us.
It's absurd.
I would just like to go down each town that has a police department and confirm they do or they don't have an ordinance like this.
They do.
Does Sykesville have an ordinance like this? Does Mount Airy have an ordinance like this?
Yes, yes.
Everybody, everybody but us.
We say everybody, but I want, I want, I want it to be on record that each one of these towns that I mentioned has an ordinance like this before I, before I vote for it.
I also think-
You know, it's one thing to, you know, I understand we need to retain a viable police force, but it seems like we're giving big city benefits to small-town, small-town police forces. And I don't have any problems giving people what they want, but I just want to know if this is an accepted practice for municipalities our size. So, does Sykesville have an ordinance like this?
Yes.
Yes.
Does Mount Airy have an ordinance like this?
Mount Airy didn't respond to us.
Yeah, as I'm-
We asked, we asked all the municipalities about their holiday leave policy.
Does Westminster have an ordinance like that?
And they all, they all had a holiday leave policy except Mount Airy is the only one that didn't reply.
Are your holiday leave policies close to what we're proposing here?
Yes. If you give me a moment, I'm working for, to find the comparison. I believe I sent that out to everybody a couple of weeks ago, but I'll find it.
I also think it's important to note that our city staff has a holiday leave policy. So- Well, and what did we have before when the previous chief came to us and asked us to change it?
Right, that was, that was done at the same time that we shifted from a 10-hour to a 12-hour shift for the police department. That was, that was a way the former chief saw, I guess as a means to offset some of the additional expense of moving to the 12-hour shifts, was, you know, it seemed at the time that the department was supportive of the 12-hour shifts and was willing to forego the holidays, which turned out not to be the case. And there was some discussion about how it was presented to the officers and things like that.
And that's what I think, it just needs to be made clear. It's not that we denied them something. We were offered this plan, however many years ago it was, they were, we were told that's what they wanted. And then when they came to us and said they wanted to change it to something else, all we did was ask for something in writing.
Right.
And it took almost six months for that to happen, even longer than that. So-
And, yeah.
We're getting there. Like, we would like to, we would like to work with them, we would like to give them what they want, we just want to have something to look at to say, this is going to work so that in another year, they don't come back and say, nope, that wasn't what we wanted either, we were just kidding.
Right. So on September 15th, I emailed you a comparison to all the other departments that did respond. So Sykesville, if you work the holiday, you're paid time and a half. Let's see, you only get paid if you work, not on the day as observed. Off the holiday, they get paid for the holiday straight time. So if you work, you get paid time and a half. If you don't work, you get a paid day off. Sheriff's office, of course, you know, different level of things.
Not really concerned with the sheriff's office. It doesn't have anything to do with us.
All right. Westminster, advanced holiday leaves provided to employees regardless of assignment, they're given 100 hours of holiday leave, 50 given on July 1st and 50 given on June 1st. Pretended, let's see, holiday hours are expected to be used on the absorbed holiday for non-essential employees. For essential employees, they can take holiday leave whenever with supervisory approval. In Manchester, they get 14 holidays. If they work the holiday, they get paid time and a half.
And they're not even asking for time and a half.
I don't need the detail.
Yeah, Hampstead, 13 holidays.
I just need to know whether they have something that addresses what we're trying to address here. Whether it's technically line for line, item for item, doesn't really matter, but I just want to make sure that we're being compliant with, with other municipalities in the county.
And-
So if, if-
We answered that back at the September meeting, that we, this is bringing us into complying with the other municipalities. That is, we answered that question at the last meeting because we did have that information, we answered it here.
Well, the last meeting, I asked a question, you said everybody's got one except one. Well, that doesn't give me the detail that I, that I want.
So we, right, we-
I want to know specifically per municipality, whether we got one or we don't.
September 15th.
So September 15th, we did send that out, the comparison of the other municipalities. That was sent out.
I'll be honest, Jim, this didn't open for me when I tried to read it with your original.
You've got it.
Oh, okay.
So I apologize, I thought you just sent a little blank document last time.
I somehow missed that. I don't think I got that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
I will look for it, but I don't remember seeing that.
It was in the weekly.
Yeah, it was, yeah, September 15th.
Including your weekly thing, right?
Back in September 15th, yeah.
I do have one question on it. For the non-essential employees, essentially staff, why would they simply not be under the same leave policy as the rest of the city staff?
So that's something that I think we would like the new chief to take a look at, the leave policy overall for the whole department. This really would be kind of a stopgap until, until the new chief can come in and look at the leave policy overall, because we think that policy also needs some updates beyond just the holiday leave. But, you know, what, what's being perceived as a, you know, more of a hot-button issue is the, the holiday leave right now. So this, this, this hopefully could, could get us through for a few months until the new chief is on board and settled in and has the opportunity to take a look at the overall leave policy, because that, that we think has some holes in it too.
Any further discussion on it? I am looking for a motion, one way or the other, to allow acting chief Mitchell to implement this policy.
And this will carry through until the new chief?
Right.
Took a look and decided.
You guys will see it again as well when we go to actually bring the policy book for adoption.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the monthly financial report. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding it?
I do have one question. The report, you know, obviously we have, we have our total annual budget in here and the current to date and, and the period, the period and, the period and total expenditures to date, but there's no way to compare that back against the budget unless, unless you just simply divide the budget by 12 and, and look at it that way.
Yeah.
Is there any, you know, one, in, like in construction, we, we are always checking our costs back against, you know, against budgets, but that's why, what I'm wondering is, is there some way, we don't see any kind of comparison to budget here for expenditures versus what we think we should have spent that month. You know what I mean?
Right. Well, a lot of the expenses are not, are not level throughout the year. We do have some that, you know, spike and, and-
I wonder if there's, if there was some mechanism that we can come up with that would encompass that.
Yeah, I think, and I'm sure everybody has their own way of viewing this, but I know for myself, I like to look at the percentage of the total budget remaining and just, you know, do a quick, you know, little bit of math in my head. So, you know, when we get to December, we're halfway through the year, 50% of the budget year, and then I like to look at that column. So, you know, it's, I mean, I tend to focus on a little bit more each quarter, so, you know, again-
Yeah, I just didn't know there was some way, other than, other than just a simple straight line.
So, right, so that's, that's usually the, the column that I focus on. So, you know, okay, we're, we're 25% of the way through the year and we've used, you know, X percent, you know, or we have X percent left. So, you know, we're, we're on target, you know, for the rest of the year. Or if there's something that, that kind of spikes where, you know, we've, we've used 80% of the budget and it's only September and we've got to make it all the way through June, that's, that's the kind of thing that, you know, would be questionable. And that might be, oh, well, we have an annual debt service and we pay that once a year and then we're done. You know, but those, that's how I kind of review this report. But I can certainly consult with Barry and see if there is maybe a different format or something that we can, you know, include another comment or something if there's, I don't know how versatile the reporting is without-
And it may be too complex to try to do for this level of report, but it was just, it was a question, because like you see, you see the expenditures, but you don't know, other than just a quick math in your head-
Yes.
You don't know how you're doing.
Right. And I know like with our capital projects, as you were saying, you know, with Broad Street, for example, you know, we have, you know, line by line, you know, here's what the project budget was, here's the percent complete, here's the budget percent complete, so we know if we're, you know, staying-
Right, if you're in the right place.
In synchronic, so, right, I, I certainly understand that level of detail as relates to construction stuff, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Just ask him the question.
Yep.
Additional comments, questions, or concerns from council? Hearing none, we need a motion on this tonight, correct? Since we're doing a fine. Looking for a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
I move to accept the monthly financial report.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's. Accounts payables, questions, comments, or concerns from the council?
Hearing none, I am looking for a motion to accept the accounts payables.
I think a motion to pay accounts.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie's. So crossing guard discussion. About two and a half weeks ago, I'm not sure if everybody's been following on the community pages, we, the bus routes for Carroll County changed a bit. Parents were informed that they are now enforcing the one-mile rule at the county level as far as bus routes goes. I mean, so there was a significant increase in kids who are walking to school from the back neighborhoods, Meadow Brook, I think Meads is still in the, they're still getting bus rides, but there was a heavy increase at the Baumgardner intersection where kids are crossing over to get to the schools. To kind of stop-gap that till we got to the council meeting, I worked with the sheriff's department where he put his SRO out to watch King's Court, King's Drive as a crossing guard, and then we moved our city crossing guard up to Baumgardner for two and a half weeks. And I did that as a stop-gap till we could come to this council session to see if council has any interest in bringing on a second crossing guard to serve at Baumgardner.
Jim, didn't we try to do this before and State Highway had an issue with having the person at Baumgardner?
This, this has come up every, every couple of years and they, the crossing guard was, before, before there was a signal at Baumgardner Avenue, we had a crossing guard there. That is the, I suppose, recommended route for the schoolkids to take from, from the neighborhoods back there. It's one of the few areas where there's a contiguous sidewalk all the way to Baltimore Street and then to the school from there. When the, when streetscape was done and the signal was installed at the light, the pedestrian signals went up as well. So at that point, the crossing guard really, the only function they had was more or less to make sure the kids were not crossing, you know, against the, across the green. So the intersection was considered to be safe for pedestrians, including schoolkids, because now there's, there's a traffic light there, there's a pedestrian signal, and there's also the lead pedestrian interval. So you push the button, all the traffic stops for at least seven seconds. But, you know, we do get periodic complaints from motorists that children are crossing not at the crosswalk but half a block away, or they're crossing when the light on Baltimore Street is green and things of that nature. So we certainly see that there's not great crosswalk discipline with the schoolkids. And so Mayor Miller's suggestion was, you know, when this came up again this year in response to some kids who used to be able to ride the bus and can no longer do so, the parents were very concerned. And the mayor suggested, well, and we had a very long conversation about it, and, you know, looking at it as a temporary, well, maybe we can put our crossing guard out there for a couple of weeks to get the kids used to, you know, crossing at the right time and kind of help them develop the good habit and try to enforce that while she's out there and sort of ease the transition period for, you know, for those kids who hadn't had to walk previously. So, again, you know, we, we stopped having a second crossing guard because the lights were put in. You know, the crossing guard was there when it was just a stop sign and Baltimore Street didn't have to stop. So with the signal, it was deemed unnecessary to have the crossing guard there, but obviously a lot of parents feel differently.
And I think you can still turn right on that light even if it is red. And that's a concern that was brought to me by some of the parents. And I'll say, you know, after we did the temporary measure, I had overwhelmingly people messaging me, hey, you know, this is a change we'd like to see permanently and that's why I just wanted the council to hear it out, whether they believe it's something. I believe one of the primary reasons people pay taxes is to see security and safety in their towns as well as public utilities. The crossing guard right now costs about $10,200 a year. They get paid $18.68 cents an hour. Again- Again, we doubled that to get a second one. But $10,000 in relative spending for safety and security of children to me is really not that much.
And it is a lot of kids.
For years.
It is a lot of kids, it is a lot of kids crossing there.
I thought I remembered there being a crossing guard there six years ago.
Community structure for years. And again, since streetscape and they automated crossing signs and traffic lights, we haven't needed that. Now, maybe there's some change that has occurred that causes us to reconsider this, but
There is.
The fact that kids are cross, are not crossing at the crosswalk is not going to change whether you have a cross, crossing guard there or not. They're going to cross where they want to cross until somebody tells them they can't do it. And, you know, you know, if we had our police department and a, a, a community policing effort to try to curb that or train the kids to cross the crossing guard for a few weeks, that might solve the problem.
We, we have two options.
The, the amount of money that's involved really doesn't make any difference. But everyone will think crossing guard is going to make any difference. So, you know, that's, it's, it's, it's winded dressing, in my opinion.
Is there a way to separate and create a secondary crossing area instead of all the kids bombarding that one crossing guard?
No, because there's no, there's no other, like, that's the only, like,
That's the only place they have to cross.
Place where there's a cross. And it is a lot of kids, like.
Oh, because they can't find bus drivers.
Yeah.
Well, with, with the Roberts Mill Road project, there will now be sidewalk on one side of the road contiguous all the way from Tony Drive down to the park. So we've had that, currently, the sidewalk ends where, I guess it was the Roberts Mill Run subdivision has like one or two houses that face Roberts Mill Road by, I'm sorry, by Bumgardner. Just, just west of Bumgardner, there's, there's one or two houses that are more modern. And the road is a little wider there and there's sidewalk in front of those homes. But then west of that, all the way, you know, past the American Legion, the senior center, there's no sidewalk on that side of the road at all. And there's no sidewalk between, I guess, Antrim, let's see. I guess Antrim Boulevard and Bumgardner. There's, you know, just a couple of little sections of sidewalk. So we will have sidewalk all along Roberts Mill Road now. And we'll also have sidewalk all the way down Broad Street on one side. And Broad Street in East Baltimore is not terribly far from the Trivannian Road crosswalk. So that, that might be a good alternate route for some of the kids that are going to Bumgardner now. Because now they'll have sidewalk to go down Roberts Mill Road.
They still have to cross the road.
But they still have to cross.
They do. They have to cross 140.
The line at Trivannian also has the leading.
Part of the problem with State Highway was that they didn't want to upset the light cycle. So if there's that many kids going to one spot, she, they don't want her letting the kids continue going once that light has turned green.
And we're, and we're not doing that.
Well, and that's what, it would be nice to have had her come in and just, or say something like, how is it working? Is it too many kids? You know, does something else need to be done? Or are we just going to assume that these kids who don't know how to use a crosswalk are going to listen to her tell them to stop because the light's turning red? I mean, it seems like if we're paying a babysitter, that we should, she should be able to do that job. I mean, it's, it's a lot of, of responsibility to put on one person if that's not going to be a, a good spot to do it in. I mean, I don't care if we have to hire three more if we can find a better way to do it.
I, in some places, the crossing guards have the ability to hold the light. I, because I've, I've seen that in, in some places. I don't, I guess the state won't allow us to do that.
Would need to check in with State Highway on that. I'm not aware of that.
Like when she's at the box and she changes the timing so it stays red.
I think we need to check with them.
Because it's like a, it's like a 20 minute, it's like a 20 minute time period. Where they're, like, yesterday when I went by, my school starts later than Tony Town does. So as I'm going to work, it is a lot of kids. It is a mob of kids.
Well, and I'm not surprised.
And it's not, it's not a safe situation, I don't think, without a crossing guard there.
But again, she's got to be working with the light that she has because of a truck's bale down the road.
I mean, I sucked out there while she was performing the duty. She is working at the light, instructing them, start crossing when the light is red.
And the kids are listening.
From when I was out there, the kids were listening.
I mean, I just, I don't want to put an extra responsibility on this one poor woman to try to control kids that maybe don't want to be controlled. So.
But I mean, it seems like it's working now with her.
That's what, from, when I went out there and checked, it looked like it was working. What I've received feedback from residents and people who have been traveling the road is, even the people who are just traveling the road feel better that there's a crossing guard out there. Because yeah, it makes you uneasy when there's a bunch of kids running across the road and you're trying to drive through town. I mean, it, it is doing its purpose. It is doing its job. And I think the residents have seen that it's doing the job. I think their question is, is why can't we have it permanently?
All right. So the question is, do we need another crossing guard to go to where, I'm not sure where the intersection is at the, the CRO is now?
So it was Keens Court, Keens Drive? Was that it? Keens Court, Keens Drive, that's where we've always had it. That's where Roxanne was before she went up to Bumgardner. So SRO took over Keens Court, Keen Drive, and we moved Roxanne to Bumgardner. So the idea would be Roxanne would either move back to Keens Court, well, currently, starting tomorrow, she'll be back at Keens Court, Keen Drive, and we won't have Bumgardner. However, I mean, if we're able to get something worked out again, I'm sure I could reach out to the sheriff and get him to give a stopgap as we start filling in this role as well. Which I don't want to put words, again, I'd reach out to him and see if we can't get that stopgap put back into place until this actually comes into effect, until we actually get another crossing guard out there. But.
Do we have enough spot in the budget to pull the money to pay this person?
Crossing guard is, is in a separate category from police. So while police salaries are way under budget because of vacancies, you know, the other line items for the non-officer salaries are pretty much on target budget wise. So, you know, we certainly, under the general category of police, we could, you know, we won't go over budget in public safety overall by spending $10,000 because we're, you know, we've been short police officers. So for this budget year, I think we could swing it, you know, whether, whether we need to, you know, to do a budget amendment at some point to move money out of, and I don't have the budget right in front of me, but, you know, out of police salary to other public safety, you know, or police admin. I'm not sure what the categories is where the administrative person and crossing guard are. But it's a separate little sub-budget for the public safety budget.
And are we good, if we get a consensus on that, are we good to start moving forward on getting this worked out until we get?
Do you need a motion?
Certainly, you know, make sure we have the job description updated and current and, and advertise.
And we'll get the budget amendment put together.
Right. And, and we may not need to do an amendment. It's not a huge dollar amount. But I, I would want to consult with the treasurer and see just because of the way, the way the crossing guard is broken out from other police salaries, you know, just to make sure we do it appropriately.
Do we need a motion to approve this position? Are you good with consensus?
Well, we're not, right. We're not having to amend the budget at this point. We're not creating a new job function. So we have a job description. So if, if the consensus is to move forward with, with another crossing guard, I think we can, you know, again, review the description, make sure it's current and, and legit. And, because it's been a long time since we've advertised for a crossing guard. Roxanne's been with us for, for a very long time. And when we did have a second crossing guard, it was a little bit of a challenge to keep that position filled. You know, and have somebody that was going to show up every day and be there every day, you know, not calling out. It's not, not a high paying role. So it may not be the easiest thing to fill, to have somebody that's going to come out there for, you know, an hour in the morning and then come out again for an hour in the afternoon.
You might be able to get one of those moms that's, that is so in favor of having a son.
I mean, that's, who knows? It's certainly a, it's certainly a possibility.
Just to get it out there.
They used to just do it because it was their kids.
But, um, yeah. But I mean, certainly we can, you know, if consensus is to, to move forward with that, we'll go ahead and start.
Fine. I'm looking for a consensus or if there's any further discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
I don't, I don't mind going with the consensus and saying yes, but I, I would like to have a follow up and just make sure that that is appropriate and that it's actually doing what it's supposed to be. I mean, if we're paying somebody to just go out and wrangle kids.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too. I mean, let's, um, let's get a consensus. How are we looking? And well, again, we'll follow up in November with kind of an update of what it's looking like. I'll reach out to see if we can't get some collaboration to get a stopgap until we do find somebody to fill the position. And let's, if, again, consensus is looking like.
What do you think, Diane? Okay.
Jim?
I think we're good.
That's all you need.
I agree. Consensus to move forward on it. So let, let's go ahead and do council member reports starting to the left. Councilmember Tom?
Dig up mine up here. All right. So we had a fairly quiet planning commission meeting recently. There wasn't anything really new pushed out. The recovery 180 site plan, I believe, was approved on preliminary. Am I correct? We should preliminary approval.
Conditional. I think we're still waiting for a, a letter or two.
Right.
Yes.
So, uh, other than that, there are a few things out there in the wind, but nothing that actually came before us at the last meeting. So it was a fairly quiet meeting. So I really don't have a whole lot to report.
Mr. Chief?
Okay. I talked with Bob Mitchell today and he had good news. We've hired a new officer. Dylan Blaze has been hired and started his service on September 27th. He's currently completing administrative requirements and will begin field training as soon as that is over. The other good news is that members of the department were at the Northwest Middle September 11th tribute. And all the students placed a flag out for every person who lost their life that day. Was an amazing ceremony. If you haven't seen the video, it's on the Carroll County Public Schools website. So a huge thank you to the officers that took time out of their day to be there because that was a touching tribute. As far as calls for service, there were 288 in September. There were 17 total citations issued, 58 warnings issued, and 10 adult arrests. As far as training, all active officers received training in cultural awareness and diversity. They also received hate crimes training for law enforcement and implicit bias training. And as always, we thank you all for everything that you do. Thank you, thank you.
Well, economic development was busy this month, I guess. We're getting prepped for the Small Business Saturday at the end of November. But Meish was able to attend a national conference for Economic Development Directors in Texas this past month. And I think this is a good thing for, for us to do is encourage our department heads to participate in events like this. I think not only in economic development, but I hope all of our department heads, I know that was a struggle when I was mayor that to try to get everybody involved at that level in the, it is either the state or the national level in their particular areas of responsibility, because you really learn a lot. You don't, you, you, you stay, you become stagnant if you, if you never leave town. And when you get out and you talk about, and talk about your job with your peers, you, you're able to grow. So I was encouraged to see that, that Meish was able, able to go to that. Another thing, Meish passed me on, you know, we have, Carroll County Times has the Best in Carroll contest every year. And I was very, I don't know, not surprised is not the word, but I was very pleased to see the number of Tony Town businesses that were represented in the Best of Carroll this year. Antrim, 1844 was best bank facility, best bed and breakfast, best romantic dining, honorable mention, and as a wedding venue. Cutting edge custom painting was honorable mention as a painting contractor. Jay Turnball Plumbing and Heating, honorable mention as a plumbing contractor. Lori in, uh, at Tony Town's honorable mention as just a living facility and honest, honorable mention in, as a nursing home. Antrim Mini Storage, honorable mention, as a storage facility. Bounds Accounting and Tax Service, honorable mention as an accounting office. New Beginnings Christian Learning Center, Best Licensed Daycare Center. And that's, that's pretty impressive for that because there's a lot of them. PSJ Orthonics, Best Orthonics Care. Buddy's Pest, Buddy's Place, Best Pet Grooming Salon. Graus Ford, honorable mention in auto dealers and new cars and used cars. Tony Town Auto Parts, honorable mention in auto parts. And George's on York Street.
There it is.
I was wondering if he was going to remember.
I say the best to last. Honorable mention as the bed and breakfast. You know, that, that's, that's quite a list for, for our small town, considering that, you know, we're, we're stuck up here in the northwest corner of the county and the population base is everywhere else. So I think we should be proud of what, what our businesses have done. And, and that should speak loudly to folks who want to locate a business in a thriving community. We are that. So I, I, I hope we can continue to, to, to build on that momentum or use that as momentum to do what we need to do. What else was I going to say? Seems like there was something else I was going to say about an economic development, but I don't, I didn't make a note of it, so I guess I won't. But anyway, it was, that's my report.
I just had, with regards to your comment earlier about Senator Reedy's comments about the grant funding for the DPW building, I do have a call in to the governor's office to the representative who wanted to come out and visit our area. Have not heard back, but I will light a fire under him because they wanted to come out and meet with us and tour the area. So when I get some response, I will let you know.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Parks and Rec. As always, there's lots going on and lots happening in each of the parks. Ballinger Park, we're aiming to have that park open by the end of October, as long as the weather cooperates. We continue to pave the trail and construct the two boardwalks. The solar lighting's going to be installed next week. And the entrance and parking lot will then be paved. Sinage and site amenities will also be installed, as well as the security camera system, which is also solar powered. We have to say thank you very much to Dan, our IT guy, for all of his work with Vern Rodkey to facilitate the solar powered cameras. I know that part was, was quite a challenge. The Memorial Park expansion, Arrow is making some slight revisions to the preliminary site plan in order to address comments made by the county during their review process. We're meeting with field lighting contractor and a building contractor to get a better picture of anticipated construction costs. The fall park and playground inspections were conducted and everything's in great shape. We have to thank our Public Works Department for all of their work in helping us ensure that our parks are the best that they can be for our community's enjoyment. The 12th Annual Harvest Fest was held this past Saturday at Memorial Park. It was an absolutely beautiful day. The weather was a little scary in the morning, but turned out great. There was a great turnout. People enjoyed the vendors and all of the food. The Fall Flea Market that was changed from last Saturday, or the previous Saturday, is going to be held this Saturday from nine to two, also at Memorial Park. Then on Saturday, October 28th, we're going to have our Tales of Tony Town Pet Costume Contest and Parade from three to five. The Chamber of Commerce's, excuse me, Commerce's Trunk or Treat will be held at the same time, both at Memorial Park. So if you have a pet and you'd like to enter the contest, please do. You can win some great prizes. Both events are free. to enter the contest, please do. You can win some great prizes. Both events are free, so bring the whole family. The Adult Tennis Clinics are running through October 10th. Participants have said they are really enjoying this program. Also, the tennis court, basketball court lights were retrofitted to LED lights. Vern Rodkey got us a great rebate from Potomac Edison, and we now have better, brighter lights and are looking forward to the energy savings. Finally, the annual photography contest is running through the end of the month. Please send in those pictures for a chance to win gift cards and free pavilion rentals. In the past, we have had some absolutely astounding pictures, and, and we just love to see them. So get them in now. And I believe that is it for me. Oh, wait, the meeting is next week, next Wednesday. Parks and Rec.
Sounds good. Before we get to public comment pertaining to agenda items, I just wanna give a quick update on the Police Chief Search. We're entering the beginning of the interview process here next week. The hope is-
I remember what I was gonna say now.
The hope is to get, you, you wanna say it real quick?
I, I can save it for another time. Let me, let me, let me make a real quick comment. I remembered what I was gonna say. A week ago, we attended a wedding in a place called Ellicottville, New York. Now, that may not mean anything to anybody, and what does that have to do with us? Well, it was a kind of an eye-opening event. Ellicottville is about a town, just about the same size as Tawny Town, maybe a little smaller. It's about the same distance from a major metro area, 45 miles Buffalo, New York. It's near ski areas like Tawny Town is, Whitetail and Liberty. And I, and there was a thriving downtown community that I'm gonna spend some time talking to Meech about. There's a lot of similarities between our two towns. We stayed in a lovely bed and breakfast, by the way. I'll give that honorable mention, too.
How lovely was it?
But it was, it was a very pleasant experience. And there was a lot of activity downtown. Here was really kind of off-season. The leaves were starting to change, but that wasn't a draw. They weren't at peak yet. But there was all kinds of activity downtown, all kinds of things to do, all kinds of different shops. And I just think that if a small town like Ellicottville, New York can show that excitement downtown, we ought to be able to do something similar. So I just, I, I just wanted to mention that, that I'm gonna be working with Meech on that a little bit to see if he can plug into some of the similarities that I saw up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To go back, so Police Chief Search, we're going into the interview phase next week. We have the police liaison, Councilwoman Chaney on the panel, a couple different agencies on the panel, hoping to get a nomination appointment to you guys in November. I think council will be decently pleased with the candidates that we have currently, that have currently applied. And I think a week or two, I'll be attending the MML Fall Conference, where I'll be chairing the Young Municipal Leaders Caucus for MML, hoping to come back with some information from that conference. And I just wanna take the time to thank council for keeping an open mind on the subjects that we went over today. I believe we got a lot done in the benefit of the citizens. I do appreciate it. I do appreciate it. Other than that, public comment pertaining to agenda items.
I just have a couple of questions. My husband's feeding the meter, so he'll be back in a second. Question on the chickens. Is, I know nothing about it. We recently moved to the area. Does that, anyone who has chickens, is there a yard? Does that have to be enclosed in a fence? Yes or no? Do we know that?
So currently, the city code prohibits animal husbandry, so we advise people not to get chickens. So this ordinance that will be introduced next month will essentially allow people to have chickens, and they will have to be in an enclosed run. For folks who may have chickens currently, I would certainly hope that they are not free-ranging. We don't get a lot of complaints about chickens being found on other people's property. But we have heard, you know, we are aware that there are some coops in the city already, even though we tell people no animal husbandry.
The answer is they, they need to be in a coop and not just free on the property.
So, so going forward, they will have to be in a coop or a run, an enclosed area.
But that doesn't, but, okay, so they have to be in that coop at all times? It's not where they can be in the backyard?
Yes. They're supposed to be in a run, yes.
Okay. And so therefore, it's not necessary, or you're not stipulating that-
They have a fence.
That they have a fence. Okay. And just a side note, as a resident, it's, it's kind of disconcerting to hear that some ordinances may not be enforced. That's a little disconcerting. I hope that's not the case. And as far as the crossing guard goes, I think safety is important. And if a child, God forbid, is injured or killed, it's gonna cost the city a heck of a lot more in a lawsuit. So I don't really think that that's an expenditure that should be overlooked. I think it's necessary. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Your name and address, if you don't mind?
Okay.
So, oh, sorry, just, you could just tell us if you want.
Christina Lawrence. I live on Colbert Street in Tawny Town.
Just so they have the record over there. Jim, did you?
John Lawrence, her husband. And I never thought I'd be making a comment on backyard chickens, but I think I heard the, the city manager say in the beginning of the discussion that you had consulted some kind of county expert. And it sounded like the standard practice is that these are generally in one-acre type lots, and with quite a large setback, like 75 feet. It seems to me that these kind of standards are kind of evolved just on what works for people. So I'm a little worried when we talk about, hey, we're gonna cut that down to maybe quarter-acre lots with much closer setback. You know, so now, you know, neighbors who have a chicken 20 feet from my house, I can just imagine hearing six chickens cackling all the time. So it just seems like, I don't think any of us have particular knowledge of chickens. So I'm just worried that if we're gonna have the idea of deviating from standard practices that much, we don't know what the unintended consequences are. So I just, I could foresee that, you know, you're gonna start to get more complaints like, hey, I'm hearing chickens. So I just would suggest at least thinking about, do we want to deviate as far from where we sound like we're going compared to what a standard practice is?
The, the ordinance itself will be published on the website, I assume, so people can go and just read it, can't they?
Yes. When, when we publish next month's agenda, we'll have a link to the draft ordinance there. And, and then, of course, it'll also be before you within, for a public hearing for additional public comment going forward. So there will be opportunity for the public to comment, both when it's, when it's introduced, because it will be an agenda item that month at the workshop, also at the Planning Commission meeting. Chairman Parker typically entertains comments from the, from the audience on anything that's being discussed. And then, of course, we'll have the actual public hearing for comments as well. So there's gonna be lots of opportunity to refine it and, and revise it and for you all to make up your minds as we go forward.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys for coming out as well. I saw you at the County Nuisance Ordinance hearing, so.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys getting involved.
Didn't think I'd be talking on chickens tonight. Harry Mead, Bumgardner Avenue. First, I really have a question. Is, is this in response to a problem that's going on? Because I haven't particularly seen an overabundance of chickens running around Tawny Town.
I would say it's in response to questions that have been asked. And we know that there are some chickens around. And so either we have to enforce the regulation or create a regulation that allows them. So-
Yeah.
Since they're already here, let's, let's figure out-
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's some chickens around Meat somewhere. And, yeah, they don't, they don't bother anybody. They don't do anything. Except for when the, one neighbor had three roosters there for a little while. But, yeah, I was gonna say, the zoning guy or the guy, he came out and took care of those real quick. Because that was killer. Just on the, on the whole, the whole setbacks and everything else, with the lots that are being allowed in Tawny Town, basically, you're almost outlawing chickens without outlawing chickens with, with where you were looking. So that's, that's kind, that's kind of what it seems like is, is the deal. So that's, just because there's, like, nobody in Meats Crossing is gonna be able to do it. I mean, I've seen those houses. They're, they're this close together. So, so, yeah, so that's, it's just, it seems like it's, it, it might be more of a solution in search of a problem.
Any additional public comments pertaining to agenda items? Hearing none, I'm going to, I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Looking for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
November.
Aye.
November. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.